Welcome to the June 22 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Councilman, or City Council. I did that again this week. Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, let us pray.
Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our employees of our city. We just thank you for our country and our nation. We ask you to bless our president. Most of all, just give us the mind to do the right thing and make right decisions in our city, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in thy name, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We actually have three ceremonial items tonight. The first thing is one of, as we talk about our prayers, we want to put the Los family, David Los with Los and Associates. He was actually just at TML last weekend, and David was responsible for helping design the Segal Soccer Complex, Barfield Crescent Park, and many sections of our Greenway, just to name a few. But he passed away this past week, so the Los family will be in our prayers.
I agree, because he continues to recover.
Yeah, and so Councilmember LaLance is not here tonight, but he had successful knee surgery today. So many of y'all have noticed Rick been standing up in the meetings, and so that's, that's why he had to have knee surgery. I'm sure he's watching right now. Tonight's a special night. There's not an introduction that needs to be made, but many of y'all, for, for the last 15 years, know this face. This is Mr. Tom Clark. He served on our Planning Commission. And Tom decided after 15 years, which is a long time in Planning Commission years, that's 45 years, for, for all the meetings that you go through, and really, out of any board that we have, the Planning Commission, I would be safe to say, meets longer, goes over so many more items. And Tom has been there, really, through the really, really good years, then some not-so-good years, and now back to some really, really good years. So I have a proclamation for Tom. Tom has served on the Planning Commission since June 3, 2002, and is completing his fifth three-year term. During his 15 years of service, he has been an instrumental part of the Commission. And during his tenure on the, on the Commission, he oversaw the development of the city's Gateway Design Overlay District, and helped develop and adopt policies, procedures, and general design guidelines that set clear expectations to the development community and other stakeholders in meeting progressive standards in a dynamic community. And whereas, as a member of the Planning Commission, he oversaw the construction of the Avenue, St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital, and the Amazon Fulfillment Center, among others. His progressive insight helped lead Murfreesboro during a period of rapid growth to support the vision and goals set forth in the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, our city is fortunate to have such a devoted and dedicated person as Tom Clark, to have served, and served in the best interest of the citizens of Murfreesboro. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 22, 2017, as a day to honor and recognize the accomplishments of Tom Clark, and ask all citizens to join me in this well-deserved recognition. And before we give Tom a round of applause, Tom has helped with many, many different new openings in the city of Murfreesboro. You've worked on many different things that you'll be able to drive around for many years to come and say that I was part of that. So I think it is fitting that tonight, we want to give Tom, on behalf of the entire city council, the key to the city of Murfreesboro. And I know Tom would, would, would absolutely say this, but, you know, whether it's a Wednesday night or a day meeting, you're away from your family a whole lot, and I know your better half is here tonight. So Clydesdale, we want to thank you for 15 years sharing Tom with us, and all those long nights that he got home really late from, from public hearings and planning commission meetings. We want to say thank you for sharing Tom with us. You know, as we've talked about, all the different things in this community that we've had that have changed, you always have heard the saying that you don't know where you're going unless you know where you've been. So I thought it would be good, on a monthly basis, that we've asked our county historian Greg Tucker to come, and mainly really for the residents to be, who are watching, to be able to, to hear some of the history of Murfreesboro. So Greg is going to give us, once a month, a little 10-minute vignette of some of the history of Murfreesboro, and I'm sure Greg will shamelessly plug that he just gave me a new book that he, he is, he's got that's out. So Greg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Shane. I really appreciate the opportunity to share some local history with the city council and, and our viewers. And I'm glad to see Rob here. I picked up some fake news that he had retired, but I'm glad to see he's, he's with us. I read recently in the paper that the local Archaeological Society has taken as a project our city cemetery. Kind of surprised me, because archaeologists dig things up, and I wasn't sure that was appropriate. But they're going to be doing some research and some preservation over there. I'm struggling with the technology already. Give me the map. There we go. So I thought a little history on the city cemetery might be, might be interesting and appropriate at this time. We all know the old city cemetery lies between Academy and Manny, fronts on Vine Street. The map that is showing is from the 1870s. It shows the boundaries and the, and the streets around it at that time, which is, with an exception, we'll talk about, pretty much what we still see today. It began with the Presbyterian Church, right here in this corner, in 1820. Now, the church had a couple of problems. One is it had bad title to the property. The other, other problem was that the church decided that the church yard should be used as the city's first public cemetery. And shortly after they made that decision, an individual died, Mr. Eldridge. Mr. Eldridge, his family wanted him buried in the church cemetery. The issue was, though, Mr. Eldridge is a very successful businessman. He owned the biggest and most notorious saloon on the square, saloon and dance hall. And the elders of the church weren't sure this was appropriate for the first burial. And the family, of course, insisted. The elders stood firm. The family buried him in his front yard, in one of the city lots at the time. And after a couple of others had died and been buried, Mr. Eldridge was dug up and replanted in the city cemetery, an inauspicious start. If we look at the map, just south of the church yard primarily used as a cemetery, was just south of the church building itself. But just south of that, the people who actually owned the property, some of the Murphy heirs, in fact, Ms. Burton and her family, actually owned the property. Here comes my relief. So just south of the church was where the Burton's put their family cemetery. And in 1832, the Burton family sold the property we see in the hole to the cemetery, to the city, for the city cemetery, with one exception. And it's interesting that that exception still stands today. The family cemetery, which is in the area where originally placed, was excluded from the title. So there still is a part of the city cemetery that's privately owned by descendants of the Murphy family. In the next 40 years, 30 or 40 years, the cemetery was very actively used, particularly the leading families of the community. It's interesting that the more prosperous families, better-known families, buried their dead in the northern part of the cemetery. Others, others went to the southern part of the cemetery, and frequently were either unmarked graves, or were marked with wooden headstones that, of course, deteriorated over time. The critical period for the cemetery was the Civil War period. During the Civil War, the church, now people say, well, they burned, they destroyed the church, they demolished the church. No, not actually. They very carefully took it apart, brick by brick, and recycled it. You can still go to some of the camping sites of the Union Army around the city and find bricks that are from the church, from the church. Also, during that period, the city fathers, whenever there were Confederate dead, for example, the Forest Raid that we're all familiar with in 1862, 26 members of Forest militia were killed in the raid. They were all buried in the back of the cemetery, again, either unmarked or marked with just temporary type stones at the time. When the war ended, the Presbyterian Church, of course, relocated. Now, here's an interesting point. We have searched and searched for a deed from the church to the city, and none exists. And I think the reason is, they had bad title from the start. The reason they had bad title is, they had a deed from William Lidle, giving them the, the property to build the church. It was discovered, though, a few years later, that Lidle didn't own the property, that it was within the Murphy properties. And the Murphys, fortunately, were members of the church, and just chose to ignore the situation. And then when Ms. Hilliard, one of the Murphy daughters, sold the property, then it became a non-issue. But the Presbyterian Church never executed any kind of deed in turning the property over to the city. In the 1870s, Evergreen Cemetery was opened, a city cemetery, and the city fathers then said, well, we'd like for all of the bodies over in the old city cemetery to be moved at the expense of the families. And the prominent families said, no way, you know, they're, they're going to rest in peace where they are. And many of the other families simply didn't have the means. So the city cemetery stayed pretty much intact, but completely neglected. And this went on for many years, from time to time, an effort would be made to clean it up. But pretty much from the 1870s until the 1900s, the cemetery was neglected. 1905, somebody took an interest in it, though. In 1905, the city east of the cemetery was rapidly developing, and a decision was made by the city. And if we look back at the map, can we do that? No. Give me back to the map for a minute. I'm a historian, not a technician. I know what's happening. I'm leaning on the board here. If we look at State Street, you can see that it dead ends on the west side of the cemetery. That's the way it was laid out. In 1905, the city decided to pave State Street and give access across. There are two sources we have for that information. William Campbell, William Crockett, excuse me, who's lived in the area for many, many years, came to be a close friend of mine, remembers his great uncle, who worked on the road crew, bringing home and telling them about the, the war buttons and buckles they were finding. And then C.C. Henderson, in his Story of Murfreesboro, which was published in 1929, recalls and reports specifically that bones, human bones and such, were being found as they cut the street across. When I talked to Mr. Crockett about it, he says, you know, back in those days, folks just didn't care much about the dead, wouldn't let them lie. In 1912, everything south of the cemetery was sold to developers, and was divided up and developed residentially. Directly across from the, what now is the southern end of the cemetery, is, of course, the Scales home. And if Madeline will permit, we're going to come back here and dig up the backyard and see what we can find. It's very likely, though, that the dead that were buried during the Civil War period, and those of the less affluent families that didn't mark the graves, are outside the cemetery now. And it would be very interesting to see just what is, what remains of that. If you want more details about the cemetery and its history, now's the time to make it work. Okay. We'll practice for next month. There it is. There's a detailed story in Rutherford Reflections, which is the latest book from the Rutherford County Historic Society about our local history. And I appreciate it and look forward to next, next month.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Greg, thank you very much. And my wife just texted me and said that you were her new favorite person, that your comment about fake news was the funniest thing she'd heard in a long time. So anyway. And Councilman Smotherman texted me to let us know that he's watching too. So he said, thank you for your, your presentation.
I think he means LaLance.
Councilman LaLance, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, Rick texted to let everybody know he's watching. So, all right.
And my dad did tell us that when we were growing up, we used to play in the cemetery. That was our baseball field, by the way. And he did tell us, when he went to build the house, that his grand, his dad said, which was my grandfather, where his house, and the house I was raised in, next to the funeral home, there were actually graves there, where our house is built. And they dug those graves up for Dad to build the house. So that's true.
All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. You have two items on your consent agenda.
There's no questions or comments. I move for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the meetings, the May 25 meeting, May 30 meeting, June 1, June 6, June 8. June 8, those were all special meetings, and then you have the, have the June 8 regular meeting. Ms. Machado, thank you for preparing all those minutes. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Seeing none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Second reading. Consider amendment to Exhibit A of Ordinance 17016.
Mayor, this is, for second reading, we've had a slight adjustment to Exhibit A. This is our final budget amendment for fiscal year 17. And the first amendment is for some donated funds for recreation, offset by expense by the same amount, so there's no effect in total to the budget. And because some projects have moved along fairly quickly, we decided it would be a good idea to make sure we're covered for some of our bond projects. So we've asked to include additional $10 million, which the funds are already on hand, but it would come from fund balance, because the money was borrowed in prior years.
Case we'll need to consider for passage, passage on second and final reading, as amended, Ordinance 17016, amending the 2016-17 budget. This is the fifth amendment.
So we'd be amending it first, and then the second vote would be as amended.
Okay. So you have the motion on the, or?
So moved on the amendment.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider Ordinance 17016 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. If it's acceptable, the council, Councilman Wade wanted to have some comments on item four, but wanted Councilman LaLance to be here to have that discussion. So with no objection, we'll pull item four off the agenda until our next meeting. Number five, consider for passage on second reading, Ordinance 17025, amending Appendix A zoning, Section 9, 13, 14, 14A, 19, 24, 25, 26, 27, Chart 1, 2, and 4, and Table 1 and 2, 2017-806.
Mayor, Mr. Blomley just quickly reminded me, the apartment item is number five. Number four is the used car.
Okay.
So my, motor vehicle sales, correct.
All right. So item five will table, item four will consider for passage on second and final reading, Ordinance 17024, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix A zoning, Section 2, interpretation and definitions, Section 9, standards for specialty permit uses, Section 24, Article 4, plan signage overlay district, Chart 1, uses permitted by zoning district pertaining to motor vehicle sales and plan sign overlay, Murfreesboro Planning and Legal Department's applicants.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, Ordinance 17026, amending Chapter 25, 2 signs, Section 25, 28, conflicting codes and ordinances, and Section 25, 223, exemptions regarding city property and athletic fields, 2017-804.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, Ordinance 17027, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix A zoning, Section 4 pertaining to general plan and procedure.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business. In pursuant to Resolution 17R PH17, adopted by the city council on May 18, 2017, conduct a public hearing to consider amending approximately 50.2 acres in the planned unit development district, Victory Station PUD, located along Fortress Boulevard. Swanson Development is the applicant. 2016-460 Notice of Public Hearing was published in the June 5, 2017, issue of the local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. Our first of seven public hearings tonight is for a PUD amendment for the Victory Station PUD. Just a little bit of history, Victory Station, which is located along both the north and south sides of Franklin Road, and along the east and west sides of Fortress Boulevard. Rather large planned development, covers a large amount of acreage, was zoned as a PUD back in 2000. Some of it's developed, others, other parts of it, because it's so large, have, have yet to be developed. The amendment before you tonight is specifically with regards to two areas of the, of the Victory Station planned development identified as parcel B and parcel T. And so I'll, there's B, and there's T. So B, what we're going to be looking at tonight is the addition of a number of uses to the allowable uses in parcel B. Parcel B was, was zoned originally back in 2000 for health services, daycares, and clinics. Only four of the 11 or so parcels that were, that were developed in parcel B have been actually constructed upon. So we have seven vacant lots that have been vacant for quite some time. Mr. Swanson is, is seeking to reason, or to amend the planned development, to add a number of uses, to make it more commercial fringe-like, I'd say. We did have some good discussion on parcel B at the Planning Commission level, and Mr. Wade and Mr. Smotherman will remember this. We had some speakers from the adjacent neighborhood along Paschal Drive, Paschal Estates, who objected to some of the uses that were proposed in the, in parcel B. Mr. Mulchan has since, has since revised the plan booklet to eliminate the uses that the neighbors requested to be eliminated from the plan book. And so the Planning Commission made their motion contingent upon those uses being eliminated, and Mr. Mulchan has followed through, and the book that you have in your packets tonight reflects the Planning Commission's motion. Now parcel T, which is the northern larger area, is an area that was added to the planned development back in 2007 for 180, excuse me, 176 units on 38.4 acres. And it included single-family detached, single-family attached, and townhomes. It's been 10 years. That development has never come to fruition, and Mr. Swanson is seeking to amend the planned development for, for a different development. So basically, this amendment would scrap that 2007 development and replace it with what's in your plan books. It would increase the density by nine units total from 176 to 185. And so rather than duplicating a lot of what Mr. Mulchan might go through, I'll invite Mr. Mulchan to come up to the podium and make a brief presentation. He's got a PowerPoint for you. I'll mention also that with the, with the condition that I mentioned earlier regarding parcel B, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval for this item. And I'll pull up Mr. Mulchan's PowerPoint, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council. Rob Mulchan, SEC, here tonight on behalf of Joe Swanson and Swanson Development in regards to amending the parcel B and parcel T of the Victory Station PUD. As you can see, as Matthew talked about, Victory Station is a very large PUD development, and there are many portions to this that have amended over the many years since 2000 when the plan was originally approved. We're coming back today. You can see the two areas, as Matthew talked about, parcel B and parcel T highlighted on the overall master plan. So he kind of gives you a sense of scale in regards to what these properties look like in the overall planned development itself. Zooming in a little, here's an arrow of the existing conditions in regards to the two parcels. They're pretty much almost side by side. They're actually divided by the Missionary Baptist Church in the middle, there between the two, that's been developed for a number of years now. Parcel B, as you can see, is mainly located along Mercy and Luke Courts. As Matthew talked about, there are four parcels out of the, out of the 11 that have been developed so far. And parcel T, as you can see to the north, is more or less a vacant lot, mostly pasture area and trees. And off to the eastern side, you can see Bucket Creek actually bisects that side over on that, on that side of the development. Looking at some more existing additions in regards to the existing zoning around it, as you can see, it is pretty much encapsulated by PUD around it, in regards to most of this being for the Victory Station PUD, but they also, to the right, the red zone over there, that's the Black and Farms PUD over there as well, so you can kind of see. And then the white area to the south and east of parcel B and T is Paschal Estates, which is RM, which is inside the county. This is medium-density residential. As Matthew talked about, there was a plan that was brought forward back in 2007. Here's what that plan looked like back then. It had 176 dwelling units on it. It had a very large amount of open space. It had a mixture of uses of types of living spaces. There was townhomes, duplexes, and single-family detached lots associated with this plan back in 2007. As Matthew talked about, the economy did go down, down, down a little bit, and so the plan has never come to fruition. Mr. Swanson has a new development coming forward, and this would be the one right now, as you can see. This is the proposed plan for parcel T. We're increasing the density by nine lots compared to the plan back in 2007, so the overall, overall density is up to 4.81. As you can see in the plan itself, there is still, 50% of this plan is overall is still used as open space, whether that's passive or recreational space within the plan itself. As you can see, I'll just give a little brief tour. As you come in off of Fortress Boulevard over here on the left-hand side of the screen, come in the main drive, we have a large green open space, and the first row of our townhomes fronts onto Fortress Boulevard, so creating a very good front door presentation to Fortress Boulevard on that side. And as you come back and pass the, as you come back to the middle, the overall development itself is the more main recreational feature. That's more of a pavilion with a fireplace for gathering spaces on that. We're also incorporating a tot lot and numerous other green passive spaces. And then also, as you get to the eastern side of the property where Bucket Creek is, we got a little pavilion back there, incorporates numerous little trails and stuff that we may, you know, people may go back and that side, plus open spaces. And also, there's a dog park located in the northern end of the creek area up there. As I talked about, the 185 townhomes, they're all going to be two stories. There are going to be a minimum of 1,770 square feet of living space. They'll all be at least two bedrooms from a greater. These will be alley-loaded garages all across the board on all the homes in the city. So every house will be an alley-loaded garage. So there'll be two different types of street systems. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Each lot will have room to park four cars. There'll be two in the garage and two in the parking spaces behind the garages along the alleyways. the parking spaces behind the garages along the alleyways, and these will also be sold under the horizontal property regime. Talk a little bit about materials, building materials, the building fronts will be a mixture of brick, stone, or cement fiberboard, the remaining sides, the side and rear will be mainly primarily just cement fiberboard, and vinyl will only be permitted in the trim and soffit areas. Here's a couple of representation graphics of what the garages are going to look like presentation-wide, the larger one on the left side shows you what the garage will look like from the alleyways, and the smaller one on the right-hand side of the screen indicates what the elevations of the garages will look like to the streetscape, so they actually put some windows and such on that to kind of make it feel as if it's an activated frontage along the street. These will all be cement fiberboard, the garage doors will be carriage-style at that time, and then again vinyl will only be in trim and soffit areas. There's two more or less lot diagrams that goes along with this program, and there's ones that front onto the public right-of-way, and there's also ones that front onto the public green spaces. Here you can see the diagram showing those. The difference between these and the, between the fronting on the public right-of-way and those fronting on the public green spaces, more or less you have a fifteen-foot front setback from the sidewalk slash right-of-way to the fronts of the townhomes along the streets, and along the green spaces is actually five foot between the sidewalk and the face, so you'll have a more or less landscape bed between that and the sidewalk. We're incorporating as part of this overall project, we're going to be utilizing trash pickup, curbside trash pickup, so in order for us to maintain getting our four parking spaces in regards to two in the garage dedicated and two dedicated in the alleyway parking area behind there, we've incorporated outdoor storage areas inside the courtyard spaces between the garages and the actual use, and the actual homes themselves along with that. There's the diagram showing more or less kind of the same footprint of what we're talking about from the standpoint of the public right-of-way, except that here you have a much more reduced setback along the sidewalk with the public green spaces as that model is showing. This is a streetscape view showing more or less the view towards the main amenity complex, which is the pavilion with the fireplace, this kind of gives you a sense of the scale of the homes, also the architectural quality of the homes, and more or less one of the points we wanted to point out tonight, that's we have activated, the ends of these townhomes are not just vacant walls, these are very active pieces to the overall project. The end units of the townhomes are actually side entry, there is no front entry to the townhomes, so that we can activate the sides of the townhomes facing the roadways as active front doors, so they don't have anything on the actual front of these end units, the other units that are internalized will face towards the street or the green space, but these end units will face solely out towards public right-aways to make that front facade look active, along with architectural characteristics and windows to make it not just a bland wall like a lot of the homes are. Another view here showing you that same view, this is a view showing the townhomes facing onto a public green space, and again, as you can see, both of those end units have an active stoop or porch area that signifies the front door to these units. We're looking at development, this is about eight phases, working back from Fortress Boulevard back towards Bucket Creek. Amenities, as I stated, over fifty percent of the site will be some kind of green space or open space, the entrance will have a monument sign with masonry and product landscaping and lighting, the community garden where the neighbors can come and, you know, grow their own vegetables and such with that, and also interact with one another, the tot lot playground area for the kids, looking at the dog park, and up in that same quadrant where the dog park is, we're also putting a reserved space for a compactor, so that if at some point in time the trash service changes over from curbside to community-wide, there'll be a space dedicated for the compactor back in that area as well. And then again, the main pavilion area in regards to the pavilion with the fireplace and the main gathering space of the residence. Access, we have one primary access point, and that'll be at Fortress Boulevard. We'll also be providing a secondary emergency access location, which will have a crash gate on it, so that if there is a blockage of the main entrance, you can have a fire safety, you can get back to the community on that side. This also gives you a better view of what the front door, more or less, to this community is going to look like in regards to the large green space with the fence and the entry monument and everything else on that side. And we'll also be providing one future stub connection to the south, to the undeveloped county properties to the south, that way if there, you know, those developments down that land ever does develop, it will be a secondary access point at that point in time. As I stated, there's really two main roadway structures to this, there is actually a public roadway structure which is indicated in the pink, that's really the two main spines vehicular wise and pedestrian wise to the community, and the blue indicates all the private alleyway systems that'll be back there, that's where all the garages are located off that. There's a view, a cross-section of what we're anticipating the streetscape for the public right-of-way look like, we'll be pulling yard trees up close to the setback of sidewalk to more or less create a faux streetscape with regards to street trees, and this is more or less a cross-section showing you the, you know, the overall sense of scale of the alleyway, it's a twenty-two-foot private access, even with a twenty-foot pavement for vehicles, fire safety, and anything else may need to utilize that way. Matthew did talk about, there is another piece to this, this is parcel B, and we're asking tonight to revise the allowable uses on that, as Matthew did talk about, there was some discussion during the planning commission public hearing in regards to, one of the neighbors in Pascal Estates had some concerns over some of those uses, we did remove those fourteen uses from there. There's also discussion in regards to fast food, drive-through locations, which we did take that out, so there is no drive-in, no dine, and drive-through or drive-in locations in regards to these lots being able to have those types of uses. There was some discussion in regards to alcohol and alcohol sales, those alcohol sales will be only from the standpoint of a sit-down restaurant, not an actual liquor store on that side as well. As Matthew talked about, so far, there's been only four lots that have been developed out of the eleven. With that, I'll be available for questions now or after the public hearing, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Mulchan?
Where are the guest parking, I see eighty-three, where are the guest parking, I'm sorry, I'm not catching.
The guest parking spaces are more or less scattered throughout the overall community itself, if you look at the overall master plan, if you look along the alleyways, if you look at the, we had indicated the tot lot there, south of the community center, you also have community center spaces there, at the end of the alleyway, there's a little hammerhead down there for fire access turnaround, there's some parking spaces provided there, same things at pretty much the ends of all the different hammerhead alleyway areas, so more or less we're scattering these around, so there isn't just one space, they're scattered all throughout, so that anybody who's in each of these areas has space for guests to come park outside.
What is the material of the fencing that you're proposing using on the park, or bark, dog park area?
It's typically usually a vinyl type chain, you know, a chain link fence is usually one of the typical uses.
Just the black vinyl?
Yeah.
Chain link? How tall?
What's that?
How tall?
Usually those are about four foot tall in regards to dog parks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing. Before we have our public hearing, we like to ask that if you're speaking, if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, if you'll keep all questions directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you'll keep your comments to five minutes, if you're speaking individually, if you'll keep those to three minutes. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this P U D amendment, please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Rod Rogers, I live at four zero seven Carmel Drive in the Victory Point neighborhood. My comments are generally with the entrance to this community, the section T. The entrance that they say will be gated and will be an emergency entrance, that entrance is right next to the entrance to another large apartment complex, it's also right across from Lazarus coming out of Victory Point. My suggestion is that why don't we bring everybody through the same intersection and put a traffic light there, there's already a lot of traffic at Lazarus and Fortress, it's already very congested, lots of high school traffic goes through our neighborhood around the back to get to the high school, to get to the other direction, probably even some to the junior high. So with the amount of traffic going in that way, why put just a few feet away another entrance exit off of Fortress that's going to also increase traffic in and out of, in and off, on and off of Fortress? Move that all together, put a traffic light, it seems like a reasonable forward-thinking solution to traffic right in that small area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Yeah.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen O Z seventeen, amending conditions applicable to approximately fifty point two acres in the planned unit development P U D district, Victory Station P U D located along Fortress Boulevard. Mr. Blomley, I had a question about the entrance and exit.
Yes, sir, Mayor McFarland, you know, and combining that with the apartment complex access point, and I'll pull up the map, combining the proposed access with the apartment complex access point, you know, that would take, obviously that would take some working with the adjacent neighbor, but it wasn't thought that the northernmost access point would be an actual means of ingress egress into this development other than for emergency access. The pattern book actually says that it's going to be a gated emergency access, so the main entrance point will be right here, farther away from that intersection. As far as whether or not either of those would ever qualify for a light, I mean meet the warrants for a traffic signal, I better remember to say traffic signal, or Mr. Balachandra will get onto me for that, it's not a traffic light, it's a traffic signal. But whether or not those would ever meet the warrants would be something that I can't answer right now, and I think that what they were trying to do in including that northernmost access was make provisions for emergency services in case the main entrance was blocked. There, as Mr. Mulchan said, they're providing a stub to the south, but, you know, it's, we don't know when the property to the south will be developed, so there will be one free-flowing ingress and egress into the development, and they wanted to provide that secondary means of ingress and egress for emergency purposes only. And it will remain gated unless emergency services dictates that it be open.
And even emergency services probably wouldn't use it unless the other intersection were blocked, is that correct?
That's what I would think.
Safe assumption.
Any questions for the applicant?
Hearing now, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreik will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution seventeen R P H eighteen adopted by the city council on May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately four point five three acres along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive from Commercial Fringe C F District to Planned Commercial Development P C D District, Salem Creek Commons P C D. Development Management Group is the applicant, two thousand seventeen dash four thirteen. Notice of this said public hearing was published in the June fifth, two thousand seventeen issue of the local newspaper, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our second public hearing tonight deals with three existing commercial lots located along the south side of New Salem Highway, they're in the blue color on the map before you, it's at the southeast corner of New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive. These lots were subdivided and developed a number of years ago, but have remained vacant. You see the parcel with the C F on it is actually where the Dollar General was developed, and there's a Burger King here on the corner of New Salem and Kason. The applicants came to us several months ago and indicated to us that they wanted to develop a, or develop a car wash on the easternmost of those three lots. The property is zoned Commercial Fringe, has been zoned Commercial Fringe for several years, and we indicated to them that we felt that Commercial Fringe was an appropriate zoning classification for the property, and that to rezone, and that to rezone it to Commercial Highway just for one use on one lot, when we thought that there was already an appropriate zoning classification on the property, was not something that staff was too thrilled about, but they came back to us and said, well, we're willing to go the extra mile and rezone all three lots to P C D, Planned Commercial District, to ensure the quality of those three lots, and to basically leave the uses the same except for adding the vehicle wash as a permitted use. And so what they've proposed to do is to zone the property to Planned Commercial Development, and they've specified the uses for the three lots, the easternmost lot being a vehicle wash, the center lot being a multi-tenant retail building, and the corner lot being a convenience market with gas pumps. So rather than go through all of the details that the applicant will go through in just a moment, I'll invite Mr. Mike Gilbert to come to the podium and make a presentation regarding his proposed development. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval after the public hearing at the May third, two thousand seventeen meeting.
Thank you, council, I appreciate your time and service to the community here in hearing our project. My name is Mike Gilbert with Development Management Group, and I'm here to talk about Salem Creek Commons. Matthew did a really good job about sort of laying out its location and purpose, so I want to try to take you through, through this project in general. This is, this slide represents the location of the sites, there's three lots, lot number two would be the lot for the car wash, it's next to the Dollar General, lot three would be a retail, commercial restaurant facility, multi-tenanted, lot four is the convenience store with gas and market. The surrounding zoning is commercial on three sides, residential on one, with the residential piece being primarily a use by church, so they got a pretty significant yard, frontage along the main street there. The site does have all utilities necessary to develop the three lots, so we will benefit from that, and won't have to do a whole lot of utility work. A few years ago, we did do a mass grading project on this, on these three lots, the purpose of that project was to clean up the lots, organize them, make more efficient a significant open-air storm structure that's shown in the red hatched area, that storm structure flows north, so we straightened that out and cleaned it up, and it eventually finds its way under the road there. Relative to uses, we are mirroring the C F zoning uses primarily, with the proposed new addition of the vehicle wash on lot two, we do want to exclude a couple of uses out of that C F zoning list, and that would be a liquor store and packaged beer. The lots themselves are in total just under five acres, individually, they're roughly an acre and a half on average. This slide represents a master plan for our development, lot two is the car wash on the right-hand side, it would share a joint user access in the upper right-hand corner of that lot with the Dollar General next door, and it's bounded on two sides by the open-air storm structure. It does have a, sort of two structures on the building itself, and then some out canopies that cover utility areas, and I'll talk about the architecture in a second. Lot three is the middle lot, posing access off of New Salem with the new curb cut there, a cross-access from lot three to and from lot four with an additional curb cut off of lot four in the lower left-hand corner of the site onto Salem Creek. Lot, lot four is the convenience store with the gas pump, gas pumps are out in front of the building. This is the parking layout, the sites are fully parked, parking counts are in excess of those required by the zoning code. Architectural char- Architectural character for our proposal, this would represent the wash and roll, car wash system. They're a very well-established company with multiple stores throughout the middle Tennessee area. The building materials for, for this structure would be brick and metal roof and EFS storefront. Building is uniquely placed on the site in that the actual front of the building is, is fairly narrow, but the architects have added a tower element, canopies over pedestrian entrances and staff entrances, and landscaping out in front in order to enhance the architecture of, of that particular lot. These are the canopies that cover the utility functions on the car wash, similar materials, a brick, EFS and shingled roofs, sloped roofs. This would be the architectural character for the middle building, lot three, multi-tenant retail and restaurant, could be up to four tenants. Building materials here would consist of stone, multiple bricks and brick colors, EFS, metal storefront, metal canopies, canvas canopies, and cornices. There's a pure elevations there showing the canopies and cornices. This building is proposed to potentially have a drive-through element as well. You can see that on the bottom elevation. This would be the character of the convenience store. All the building materials on this convenience store would be the same as those in the retail commercial building. Has a canopy pump, the pump canopy, has all the same materials, stone, brick, EFS, and a sloped roof system. More views of the elevation there, and then of the pump canopies. See any questions I can answer? I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll need to hear all the public hearing for this planned development change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen OZ-18, to rezone an area along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive to Planned Commercial Development PCD District, Salem Creek Commons PCD.
Matthew, on page twelve of our booklet, it says that the, there'll be a right-hand turn lane constructed on New Salem Highway, but when I'm looking at New Salem Highway in the picture above it, I don't see any right-hand turn lanes.
Mr. Smotherman, I don't know that it's depicted on this drawing, but they're, they're committing to, to that turn lane being constructed. And of course, that would be subject to the review and approval of both T.DOT and our, and our engineering department.
Yeah. Are we looking at just the one entrance, or the one that the car wash is using as well? Because it almost looks like there should be two.
I believe he was referring to just the, the joint access between, that would serve lots three and four. Is that correct, Mr. Gilbert?
Do we have any timing on when New Salem will be reworked? What's the latest update on that?
According to Mr. Huddleston, who I'm always thankful is here, advertising for bid in December.
Let me ask another question, because it's awfully quiet in here. At the roadway following the easement going up the side of Salem Highway, there's no sidewalk or anything in the plans here, it doesn't look like. Would there be one with the construction of the new roadway? Do we think?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'd.
Would there be a sidewalk following New Salem Highway? I mean, it looks to me like you were going from the package, the convenience store on the corner to the Dollar General store. You'd either be walking through people's parking lots or out on a pretty busy roadway. Will there be a sidewalk going down that thoroughfare at some point?
I think, I just looked back at Mr. Huddleston, and, and what I suspected is correct, is that that will be included as a part of the design plans for the reconstruction of New Salem Highway.
Thank you for the thumbs up there, Mr. Huddleston. Anybody else got any questions?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreik will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll concern, pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH nineteen adopted by the city council on May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, will conduct a public hearing and consider rezoning approximately twenty-two point five acres along Manson Pike and Brinkley Road from single-family residential fifteen, RS fifteen district to planned residential development PRD district, Blackman Station PRD, laws bolden applicant two thousand six sixteen dash four fifty-nine. Notice of this said public hearing was published in the June fifth, two thousand seventeen issue of the local newspaper.
Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Subject property is, has frontage on both Brinkley Road and Manson Pike, and it's currently zoned RS fifteen, but it's undeveloped except for one single-family house. Mr. Bolden and Mr. Lundey have put together a development plan to, which would, which calls for the rezoning of the property to PRD, Planned Residential District. And this is a zoning plan that contains both single-family attached homes or townhouses, as well as single-family detached lots. The property is twenty-two point five acres, and I think what they're trying to accomplish with this is to kind of transition the zoning with a lesser density the further west you get. And you'll notice that directly across Brinkley Road to the east, you'll see a PRD. That's the, I forget the name of the, Wilkerson Downs, thank you Clyde. Clyde did the pattern book, so he's very familiar with it. So, city council zoned the property across the street PRD for a townhouse development. Plans have been approved for the townhouse development, but I don't believe it's under construction yet. And so, what Mr. Roundtree, Huddleston Steel, has shown in the pattern book for Blackman Station, which is the proposed development before you tonight, is a transitioning of the single-family attached townhouse product closer to Brinkley Road to a single-family detached product. The closer you get to the existing single-family subdivisions to the west, and that's the Oakton subdivision, Blackman Meadow subdivision, and Princeton Oaks subdivisions. And Mr. Roundtree will come up in just a moment to brief you on the details of the proposed development. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Planning commission did unanimously recommend approval for this rezoning request at its May third meeting.
Mayor McFarland, commissioners, staff. My name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here representing Mr. Bolden, Mr. Lundey, and also Mr. Dan Bobo is here as well, the developers of this particular project. And we're excited about presenting you to Blackman Station. As Matthew has spoken well about it, it's an exciting place to be in Murfreesboro. This particular area of Murfreesboro has become just the hotbed of development, as we'll see through this presentation. First off, just in a nutshell, it is a twenty-two point five acre site located in the Blackman community. We're asking for rezoning to, to the PRD designation, and there are single-family lots, there's thirty-two single-family lots and a hundred and fifty-four attached home, for a total of a hundred and eighty-six units proposed for this particular acreage. As mentioned, it, what we're asking for with this particular zoning is a transition from the commercial development, which is located towards the north, the north, which is currently a commercial local, and then also the commercial fringe that is to the due south. And the, the area is serviced by both Brinkley Road, as well as Manson Pike, and we know those two roads are under basically consideration for expansion. I know we can't get there soon enough for a lot of the residents, but we, we know that's coming. So, this particular area continues to have pressure for development. But like Matthew said, it, it's definitely a transition between the commercial development going with the PRD to the RS fifteen as well, to the west. As far as just the aerial map, it just shows that this is really where the country and the city are colliding very rapidly in this area, in this particular corner, being surrounded by a lot of residential. We feel like it's an appropriate use to go ahead and transition with more residential. As we go further into the west, we see the residential is really the primary development, whereas to the east, there's a lot more commercial development. As far as the master plan's concerned, several components we want to highlight. First off, as Matthew mentioned, the yellow portion is the single-family detached lots. They're eight thousand square foot lots. The, I guess you'd consider them orange or brown in this particular image, but these are the attached home without garages, so there'll be common parking lot for a majority of the units. In the lower section, these are actually attached homes, but have their own garages, and there'll be one and two-car garages. No matter if it's a one or two-car garage scenario, the driveways will service two cars on the exterior of the garage. And then guest parking was a major consideration by the city staff, so we, we're being encouraged to distribute the parking throughout the development. A lot of the parking in this consideration is, is closer to our common areas, and then, and we'll go through the common components there. There is a pavilion, as we're seeing pretty much in most of our PRDs, or some sort of a recreational element, a pavilion concluded. There's also a playground area, and then there's a dog park as well. And Mr. Smotherman's request that our planning commission meeting was that the dog park be separated from the playground area, just so there wouldn't be any kind of conflict with children and dogs. So, that's been done, but it's also still conveniently located to the guest parking. This is just an image, an architectural image, of the attached homes with garages. And this is the same kind of image, but this is without the garages. As far as the architectural character, as we're seeing, really consistent with this area, masonry's really being encouraged, so these homes will all be masonry. The commitment we've made on the attaching, this is that ten percent of the, of the home will be either brick or stone. Staff is working with us on making sure that there's some sort of water table, defined base, and that's where the stone and the brick would come in, but the majority of the structure will be hardy board. And as we're being encouraged, you know, designated differentiating roof lines to make it architecturally interesting, these particular units all have small porches, so they have a lot of dimensional relief, and the garages will be carriage house garages, and as was mentioned, the driveways are wide enough to accommodate two cars, even if it's a single-car parking garage. These are just some simple images of the, the homes that'll be a part of the detached homes, individual lots. And again, very much craftsman in character, as we're seeing, it's kind of consistent with, you know, with, with Wilkerson Downs and other developments in the area, taking on a little bit more of a craftsman character. Immunities, it's important to city staff, important to our developers as well. Pavilions, dog park, playground areas will be consistent with most of the planned developments in this area, so this will be consistent with those. As far as phasing's concerned, we, we think the majority of the development will start off coming off of, off the portion that leads, I think that's right off of Brinkley, and then we're going to develop to the west from there. But the phasing plan is consistently characteristic of development. You know, you're going to do the best you can to figure out what's going to happen in the future, but we're definitely going to move, basically, the first distance away from the adjacent, um, single-family homes, and then move, move west. I'm available for any questions you may have regarding the development. I'm here with, as I said, Mr. Bolden, Mr. Lundey, as well as Mr. Bobo. If there's any specific questions to the development, they'd be glad to answer as well.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Roundtree first, thank you for moving the bark, bark park away from the playground. I appreciate that.
It's become a development standard.
How, how does? It's because I ask every time, and I appreciate it every time. Hey, what is the timing as far as the single families being built and the, the rest of the units being built? Is, is it pretty much all going to start at the same time, or is there, how's that going to work for you?
Well, that's a very specific question to the phase, and I think we're working Eddie towards, you know, from Brinkley towards the west, so I think they're going to be later in the development cycle. Can we get more specific on that? Is that adequate answer? Yeah, so they'll be, yeah, we'll just be working towards the west, so it may be a while before we actually, you know, butt up against a single family.
Projected how long? Give me, give me a guess. Before the single-family units are begun.
Laws Bolden, three fifty-eight DeJarnet Lane. We'll get to the single-family, we think, second phase as it stands now, and that would probably be about maybe eighteen to twenty-four months out.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll need to open the public, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Hey, my name's Anna Moore. I live in Princeton Oaks, lot five, four, three, oh, four, Farron, David Court. My lot backs up to where it looks like some of the single-family houses are planning on being built, and there's a long tree line. I don't, when they marked my lot, it was on the trees, but I don't know who owns the tree line. Are y'all planning on leaving that there? Don't tear that down. Yeah, that was another concern, because I do have some, like when it was really raining in the spring a lot, there was a lot of water that sat there, so I was wondering if that was going to be diverted into that, and I do have a drainage ditch that runs in between my lot and another lot.
If you don't, if you don't mind, if you'll ask us the questions, we'll, we'll get the answers.
There's a drainage ditch in between the tree line.
Okay.
And I did have a lot of sitting water this past spring when we had a lot of the rain, and it does go in between my lot and my neighbor's lot. And so, if there was going to be a lot more water coming in that direction. Was also wondering the price point of the homes, and if it's going to be a limit on rental, if the neighborhood will be open for rental property, or if there's a limitation for the amount of rental property.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen OZ-19, to rezone an area along Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to Planned Residential Development PRD district, Blackman Station PRD. Ms. Schreik, I think I know the answer to this, but I'd rather you answer, can we limit the amount of rental that's on any piece of property?
I don't believe council can make a limitation on the ability of anyone to rent property. The developer could, most developers don't. I don't know what their plans are, we haven't addressed that, but council would not be able to impose that kind of a condition.
Okay. Price point of the homes?
To understand, the price point of the homes would be two fifty to three hundred, but I think the more important question is it'll be very comparable to the adjacent neighborhood.
Okay.
We feel like it'll actually increase their property value.
And then how about the drainage ditch that, I think the address was forty-three oh, four Farron, I don't know, does that sound, is it? Farron, David Court, okay. Farron-David Court, okay.
Yeah, the way we typically, I mean, what we've seen in the past is a lot of time development gets to take care of a lot of those water concerns. We don't know exactly where the water's migrating, if it's coming across the site and ending up in your location. So absolutely any water on our site's going to be taken care of and not allowed to migrate onto her site, but if we can do something to help her in terms of alleviating some of the issues she's having with pooling, we'll do our best, as we've done in other subdivisions. And as far as the tree line's concerned, there's absolutely no motivation to take it out. It's always a variable. We'd have to put something back in terms of a buffer if we didn't have the tree line, so we would like to keep that, but that's really kind of contingent on grading. But from a development standpoint, absolutely we'll do our best to keep the trees in place, to keep them healthy and protected.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Now, for the questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17R PH21, adopted by the City Council on May 18, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for approximately 11.6 acres, and annexation of approximately 12.24 acres, and, two, zoning of approximately 8.9 acres along Halls Hill Pike to be planned residential development, PRD District, Heritage Place, PRD, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Old South Properties, applicants 2017-505, 2017-412. Notice the said public hearing was published in the June 5, 2017 issue of the local newspaper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Old South Properties is requesting annexation of an 8.85 acre parcel located along the north side of Halls Hill Pike, east of North Rutherford Boulevard. This property lies just west of the Providence Point subdivision. The property adjoins the city on the north and east, and it does lie within the city's urban growth boundary. Our study area includes a 2,100 linear foot section of right-of-way along Halls Hill Pike, stretching from Woods Edge Drive on the east to about 100 feet west of the subject property. 10-foot strips would have to be installed, or would have to be implemented there to keep the city from surrounding unincorporated property. Staff completed a plan of services for this request, and based on the responses that we received from city departments and other service providers, it appears that this property can be adequately served, and there's a copy of the plan of services in your packet. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this annexation request at its May 3 meeting, and voted to send this item forward to you with a favorable recommendation. The next item on the agenda will be an accompanying rezoning request for this property. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for approximately 11.6 acres and annexation of approximately 12.24 acres along Halls Hill Pike, Old South Properties, applicants 2017-505. Anyone wishing to speak for the plan of services and the annexation, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 17R PS21 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 11.6 acres along Halls Hill Pike, Old South Properties, the applicants, 2017-505.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now consider for adoption Resolution 17R A21 to annex approximately 12.24 acres along Halls Hill Pike, and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Old South Properties, applicants 2017-505.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a zoning request for the property that the council just, I'm sorry.
Actually, we need to, we need to do, this is, this is the resolution for the annex.
I'm sorry, I'm just like rambling.
No, you're fine.
Any attention?
You're all right.
Let me step out of the way.
No, you're fine.
Do we have a motion for the annexation?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now the podium's yours.
I get to, I get to skip that whole thing, all right. Properties currently zoned RM or medium-density residential in the county. The applicant has asked that the property be zoned PRD or planned residential district in the city, simultaneous with annexation. The proposed PRD would include 129 townhouses divided among 24 buildings, and the gross density would be 14.39 dwelling units per acre. Adjacent zoning includes RS-15 on the north, RS-10 on the northeast, and RM-16 on the southeast. Properties to the west and south are unincorporated and are zoned RM in the county. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan shows this area as appropriate for multifamily residential, and this request certainly seems to be consistent with that plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item on May 3, and voted to send this to you with a favorable recommendation. With that, I will turn it over to Matt Taylor from SEC, who's representing the applicant, and can talk more about the project. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony, Mayor, Council. I'm Matt Taylor from SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Dan Bobo from Old South Properties, the applicant on the zoning piece of this application. We are here tonight to present to you a brief presentation over the Heritage Place project. Start by orienting you to the site. Our project is about nine acres, mainly open pasture land on the north side of Halls Hill Pike to the east of Rutherford Boulevard. We do have some trees along our eastern boundary, but primarily the whole site is open pasture. We do have a church to the north of us, remaining open pasture to the west, bounded by Halls Hill on the south, and then Providence Point Development to the east. This is looking directly onto the property from Halls Hill Pike. This is looking toward the northwest from Halls Hill, and then looking along Halls Hill back toward the west, toward Rutherford Boulevard. The plan itself, we've requested a PRD zoning to allow for 129 townhomes on just under nine acres in size. We've committed all of our utilities to be underground. Our units would range in size from just under 1,100 square feet to almost 1,200 square feet. All of our owners here would have to be a member of the HOA, which would be managed by a third-party association. That HOA would maintain the roads, the exterior of the units, the landscaping, the detention, the amenities, basically everything outside the four walls of each unit. We've planned a single entrance off Halls Hill Pike. We've got a compactor near the front entryway to the development, and then we've got two, two detention ponds, one near Halls Hill Pike and one centrally located within the property itself. Our units will be sold under a horizontal property regime. Each of those owners will have to be a member of that HOA I mentioned earlier. We feel like we've created a walkable community with sidewalks along both sides of our drives, and all those sidewalks connect back out to Halls Hill Pike, which has a sidewalk network already created. We have planned for landscape buffers along our entire western and northern boundary, and about two-thirds of our eastern boundary until we meet back up with the apartments to the east. Our compactor will be screened through a solid wall, as well as complemented with additional landscaping around that. And all of our streets here will be private streets. Units themselves will all be two-story townhomes. They'll all have a front porch feature, as well as some outdoor patio living area in the rear. Here's an architectural drawing showing the different materials, the vinyl shake siding and vinyl siding mixed throughout. And here's an actual picture of some of the units constructed close to this project. You can see the different colors, the different roofline pitches, the way they worked in the front of these buildings in and out to create some variations there. The amenities, the main structure amenity is located central to the neighborhood. We'll have our mail kiosk here for a gathering area, as well as an outdoor pavilion. There are some existing trees in this location that we're going to attempt to save to accompany this pavilion, but that will be subject to any final stormwater design for this particular area. And we've also tried to create a sense of community as you come in off of Halls Hill, by creating a nice monument sign, complemented by landscaping around this sign, as well as landscaping along Halls Hill Pike as well. We will have one primary access point that will be off of Halls Hill Pike. Due to the nature or the shape of the land, that's all we can access. None of our neighbors have stubbed to us yet. However, we have planned for a future connection to the neighbors to the west. We have stubbed in this location here, so when the property to the west develops, they will have an opportunity to connect our neighborhood and ours to theirs. Lastly, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. We sent out a little bit over 40 invites to neighbors. We had about four attendees show up to that neighborhood meeting. Coming out of that, we're able to make several accommodations for our neighbors. We slid the entrance where we come in off Halls Hill Pike to the west, toward Rutherford Boulevard, and that was in an effort to avoid our headlights shining into his living room for the neighbor across on the south side of Halls Hill. We also moved the compactor away from the road behind our first set of units, so it was less obvious to the passerby's. And then our neighbor to the west, he is still actively farming that land, and his access point currently is on this property, and so we agreed to install some culverts on his property after we developed, so he can still access his land. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 8.9 acres along Halls Hill Pike as planned residential development, PRD District, Heritage Place, PRD, simultaneous with annexation. Old South Properties is the applicant, 2017-412. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ21 to zone approximately 8.9 acres along Halls Hill Pike as planned residential development, PRD District, Heritage Place, PRD, simultaneous with annexation. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17R PH23, adopted by the City Council on May 18, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, adoption of a plan of services for and annexation of approximately 1.94 acres, and, two, zoning of approximately 1.36 acres along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive to commercial fringe CF District, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Chris Bratcher is the applicant, 2017-504, and 2017-408. Notice this said public hearing was published in the June 5, 2017 issue of the local newspaper.
All right. Planning Department has received a petition for annexation of a 1.36 acre parcel located at the northwest corner of Florence Road and Alexandria Drive. This property lies west of Northwest Broad Street and the CSX railroad track, and lies adjacent to the Florence Field subdivision on the north and west sides. The property adjoins the city on the south and east, and it does lie within the city's urban growth boundary. Included in the study area is a 430 linear foot section of Alexandria Drive. Staff completed a plan of services for this request, and based on the responses that we received from city departments and other agencies, it appears that this property can be adequately served. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this project on May 3, and voted to favorably recommend this project to you. The next item on the agenda will be an accompanying rezoning request, and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for and the annexation of approximately 1.94 acres along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive to commercial fringe CF District. Chris Bratcher is the applicant, 2017-504. Anyone wishing to speak for the annexation and the plan of services, please come to the podium.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Ruck. I'm at 7102 Pope Drive, which is directly kitty-corner there to the property you're looking to annex. I had a lot of neighbors here last time. Most of them pretty much thought they could not fight City Hall on anything, and after Mr. Smotherman's words, they, they considered the fix was in, as they said. I don't know how long that Mr. Smotherman had looked at the property, because you mentioned that you saw no traffic issues. Maybe you could, you could tell me how long you were there.
How long was I there at the property?
Yes, sir.
I was there for probably, on the time that you're referring to, I was probably there for 30, 45 minutes in the afternoon, 5:00 to 5:30, some 5:45, something like that.
Well, you probably hit it on a lucky spot. I was, I wanted to say that perhaps a commission of study on the traffic issue, the train over the last 20 years, I mean, has increased exponentially. It used to go by maybe once an hour, which wasn't a big deal 20 years ago. One of the reasons I moved there, the community far from the city, you know, not a lot going on. You just had the train to worry about, pretty much. And of course, now they've got more track, train station is pretty much there, sorry about that. And it literally can come by, you know, every 20 minutes, even less at times, and it can sit there for up to 30 minutes. And with only two ways in and out of the Florence Field subdivision, that causes quite a traffic problem, a big traffic problem. Now, annexing the property and making it commercial, as you well know, would, would increase the traffic. And, I mean, we already have the issue with the, with the sound when they removed the berm. They managed to pay off a few neighbors that aren't there anymore, removed the berms, so the noise increased. It's probably not going to help when they, when they put another building in there. I wouldn't have been opposed to perhaps purchasing the property myself, and then, you know, the community getting in on it. I would have liked to have that, the chance, the offer, anyways. And... Are you former Vice Mayor?
If you don't mind, if you'll direct your questions to us.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not real, real good at this sort of thing. They're already, we already have the mulch plant there, which, when we had to have the meeting on the mulch plant, we were, we were pretty much told that the, the wind blows the other way, you don't have to worry about the smell. But that didn't really work out. So between, you know, that, the traffic issue, the noise, with all that going on, it's still a pretty decent neighborhood. There's a lot of good neighbors. Most of them all told me that they plan on moving if this goes through. And I can't necessarily blame them, because it's not going to increase their property values. And these are all the concerns that we have, or I have, I guess, right now, because everybody pretty much thought that was over. But that's all I really have to say, and I just appreciate your time, and I'd hope you consider that before you move forward, that maybe you should take a deeper look into this, because there is a bit more going on.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider for adoption Resolution 17R PS23 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 1.94 acres along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive. Chris Bratcher is the applicant, 2017-504. And this is for the plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now consider for adoption Resolution 17R A23 to annex approximately one point nine four acres along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive, and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Chris Bratcher, applicant, two thousand seventeen dash five oh four.
I'm going to move for approval, but I also want to make a comment that, as a general rule, when we see a large turnout of people at a planning commission meeting, it's because there's unanswered questions and concerns. I think what we see here tonight is the fact that a lot of those people's concerns were put to rest, and I think that it's a good sign that, that they all felt comfortable with the proposed project and the answers that they received at that meeting. So, so I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Wright, it's me.
Thank you, sir. This is a zoning request for the property that was just considered for annexation. The property is currently zoned RM or medium density residential in the county. The applicant, Chris Bratcher, is requesting that the city zone the property CF simultaneous with annexation. CF or Commercial Fringe is a less intrusive commercial zoning than the CH or Highway Commercial zoning. CF allows retail shops, gas stations, and most types of restaurants by Wright, but unlike CH, CF does not allow some of your noisier and more intensive uses, such as automotive repair and vehicle sales. Zoning districts lying adjacent to the subject property include CH, HI, and LI on the south, and CH on the east. Adjacent properties to the north and west lie within the unincorporated county and are zoned medium density residential. I do want to note, because it came up at Planning Commission, that this property, while it is physically located adjacent to the Florence Fields subdivision, and looks like it should be a part of the Florence Fields subdivision, our research indicates that this lot is independent of that subdivision and has not been part of that subdivision in the past. The Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five plan is a little bit ambiguous on this particular property. The plan shows it as vacant or undeveloped, which appears to be more a reflection of its current state than any plan for future use. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this annexation request at its May third meeting and voted to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. The applicant is here and can discuss the request in more detail if needed, and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
All right. We'll need to conduct a public hearing for this zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Ms. Schrute.
You know, I just wanted to state that on a few occasions, it's been mentioned that it's not in the subdivision. It's not accessible from Florence Road. Florence Road sits, what, better than ten feet above the property, probably more than that. I haven't actually stood in it myself. But you could sink a car and a half down there from the road to the property. So, any and all traffic would be on Alexandria. I just wanted to state that. And it would be pretty much right there at the end of my driveway, as you can see. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that it is not an accessible road off of Florence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schrute.
Mayor, and some members of the council, I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tony Molina, and for the past fifteen years, my family and I have owned the property directly adjacent to the property in question. And speaking with several people in the neighborhood, while we certainly understand the objections that individuals might have, my family and I have talked about it, and we're actually in favor of the, in favor of the proposed change. As the land sits right now, it's kind of a nuisance to our property. One of the major problems is dumping. We get a lot of trash blown over to our property, and we're now being undeveloped. It just kind of, it turns into a target for that. Another problem that we run into is a lot of the lower lying areas develops a lot of standing water, so we do deal with rodents and mosquitoes and bugs and whatnot. So, with these problems, you know, we've kind of come to the conclusion that this property being developed would be a good thing. It's not really, I have a background in real estate appraisal, and the highest and best use of this property is definitely not residential by any means. So, in our opinion, we think, you know, it would be the highest and best use of the property to be developed. We think it would be beneficial for the neighborhood in the long run. So, we do, I do thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, and we thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Chris Bratcher. I'm the owner of the property that's, that we're discussing tonight. To give you a little bit of history about the property, I've owned the property for about thirteen years, and there's a reason why this property hasn't developed as a residential piece of property, is because it, where it sits, if you're standing on the property and you look to the, straight to the left of this property, and I don't have a map to show you, but I did lay a map on your desk, it's, to the left is Commercial Highway. There's a car lot to the left of this property that's adjacent to the CSX railroad tracks. Then if you look about ten o'clock, there's the Florence Station Convenience Store with the, with the gas canopy, straight in front of it. Then directly in front of it is a piece of property that is zoned light industrial that will be developed as light industrial. And then a little to the right is the city's multi-facility with the famous Hogzilla there running all the time. And then, straight to the right of that property is about a five acre tract that's zoned Commercial Highway as well. So this property is pretty much surrounded by either industrial or Commercial Highway. And it's, it's on a busy corner, and I think the best and highest use for this piece of property would be commercial zoning. I've had it on the market for about thirteen years, have been unsuccessful as residential. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we call Mr. Huddleston up, talk about traffic?
I'm sorry.
Can we call Sam Huddleston up, talk about traffic?
If it's all right, we'll do that after the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen O Z twenty-three to zoning area along Florence Road and Alexandria Drive as Commercial Fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. The gentleman from Pope Avenue, Pope Drive spoke during the annexation rezoning, and he mentioned CSX railroad track, and I thought it'd be, maybe fitting to talk a little bit about that. And obviously, CSX is a presence in our community that we have to deal with all the time. This is a tough intersection because of the railroad track and because of the proximity to Northwest Broad Street. What I can tell you, while these are not overnight fixes, I can tell you that, that the city has systematically been addressing CSX with our new road projects. We've, we've created two or three new crossings in town that are grade separation crossings, which then are not impacted by the, by the railroad track. I did note this, this evening on the way in, that CSX had Middle Tennessee Boulevard closed at Church Street for rail maintenance, and it, it was closed at about lunch, and then on my return at about five or so this afternoon. So, even here in town, that can be an obstacle for us. You will be hearing, if you haven't already, from our major thoroughfare plan, and this edition of our major thoroughfare plan takes a really tough look at CSX, and with the roads that interact with CSX. And I think, while they're not, again, short-term solutions to this particular issue, they are, there are some global solutions that would help this area if we can implement those in the near future. And then addressing whether the property is accessible from Florence Road, Mr. Bratcher and his team haven't turned in a site plan, but we'll, we'll scrutinize their access plan very carefully during that process. I think there are a couple issues that, that I saw on there, on the property, that would affect access, and that's how do you serve sewer, and how do you grade the property. And with those two pieces of information, we'll be able to craft a access plan for this property that will be as sensitive as it can be to that area. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Whenever we see a piece of property on a corner like this that's heavily traveled and surrounded by Commercial Highway and industrial property and stuff like this railroad, I often think of Doug. He'd say at council meetings, and he'd say at the planning commission meetings, "This is just not where I'd build my dream home." And I think that very much applies to this particular lot. That's, it was never a good idea to consider a residential property on this lot. What's best use of it, it, to me, I think Commercial Fringe is an appropriate use, and unless there's any questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director, Public Parks, Parklands, and Park Facilities naming policy. Ms. Jackson.
Included in your agenda packet tonight is a complete policy for the naming of parks, parklands, and park facilities. To highlight a few of those key guidelines, the policy is intended to encourage recognition of geographical, environmental, or developmental features, or names of historical significance. It's meant to encourage recognition of individuals who have made significant contributions to our community, and also for sponsorships and donations for funding of property acquisition, construction, or operations. The potential names might include a geographical location, an outstanding natural feature, a traditional name by which the area has been known. The name might be for a historical event, group or individual that lends importance to the park, for a legend, for an individual or group who contributed to the acquisition or the development of the park or facility, for an individual who provided exceptional service in the interest of the park system, or for a community or civic leader whose dedication and leadership made a lasting impact on the community. Also, a park can be named if there's an approved agreement in the transfer or purchase of property, or in the construction of a major park facility. For the naming process itself, the Parks and Recreation Director and members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission may receive suggestions from the public, from elected or appointed officials, staff, or any other interested parties. These will be submitted to the Parks and Recreation Commission, who will present a recommendation to city council for consideration and approval. Any questions?
Any questions?
Another question, but a comment.
Sam.
In the future, when you go to name another facility, a park, a ball field, years ago, I was contacted on my way over here. The Caldwell family contacted me. Years ago, they were coming from Paducah, Kentucky, a family of five children and mother and father. Three of the kids were in a car accident, and they were killed instantly in that car accident. And the city of Murfreesboro named a park after them, a Ball Field, the Caldwell Field, and somehow that got removed. So, the daughter said, you know, her parents left here, died thinking that a park was named after their parents, I mean, their children. So, will you all please consider naming the Caldwell Field again, renaming some portions of your field, the Caldwell Facility? I remember the Caldwell. You don't.
Don't?
Yeah, anybody in their sixties will remember it, but...
Softball field at the airport.
Yeah, at the airport, it was named, and somehow that name was removed.
Remember that, Sharon?
So, if you will consider making it a priority, then let's get the Caldwell Facility back. Do you remember that?
I do. I remember. It was right in front of the airport. It was a softball field.
Okay. So it disappeared, and the Caldwell family, they are really hurt over that. So, in the future, if you will consider in your Parks and Rec, let's name another...
Have we not had policies and procedures on this before? It seems...
We have had a couple of different things that have addressed. There is a school naming policy, and there is a memorial and donation policy. I believe that the understanding, of course, with city council's authority, has named things before, but the West Park and, and the length in which we have just referred to it as the West Park, I think, brought to attention the fact that we did not have such policy, and it was time to make one.
I think it's a good move, and I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief for roof replacement package for Doug Young Public Training Facility.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. I'm here on behalf of Chief folks that the city council approved a roof replacements package for the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. The city purchased the Franklin High Public Housing Project at seven oh one Bridge Avenue in two thousand sixteen to build a public safety training facility. During the planning and design phase, the decision was made to retain five of the apartment buildings on the rear perimeter to be used for realistic training. All other apartment would be demolished. As best as the basement has been performed on the buildings during which flues that extended the roof were removed. The resulting holes in the roof were temporarily patched by the Facility Service Department. Due to the age of the roofs and a temporary patching, the five buildings selected to remain on the property need roof replacement. The total package guaranteeing maximum price is one hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, which includes the base bid for the roof replacement and the projected overhead. The funds for this will come from previous allocated CIP funds. Your recommendation to city council approved a roof replacements package at one hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. I will try to answer any questions if you have any.
No questions, I move for approval. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. Consider recommendations of the city schools assistant superintendent to waive the bid process and purchase network switches wireless access points and voiceover IP from Wright Corp, Inc. on the GSA contracts for Black Fox School additions.
Mayor, this is a letter that is, goes hand in hand with what y'all approved last week for the cabling contract. This is part of the hardware that they're going to need to do, that contract. They found it on GSA pricing, which will allow them to continue with this without delay, and they've asked for approval. So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the city recorder finance director regarding federal grant internal controls policy.
Mayor, this is a policy that's required by the Office of O M B. Last year, at this time of the year, we did an internal control policy for just general internal control for all departments of the city. This one is specific to handling federal money, and beyond this, each department, as they get federal grants, will also have to make sure they're following the rules and regulations for their specific grant requirements. But this is an overall requirement that needs to be done by June thirtieth, and we feel like we've got a good, high-level policy here to start from, and we will work, to work with the departments to make sure they have good policies for their grant management.
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution seventeen R eighteen adopting a public records policy for the city of Murfreesboro.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Tyndall is the one who put this policy together. It is a requirement by state law that we have this in place. If you have questions on the policy, I have read it, and although we haven't talked about it, I did attend a class with Ms. Baker on this, by, put on by M T S recently, and it basically is to put into a process for people who want to get public records from the city, what our responsibilities are, how long we have in order to work with them. It's for Tennessee residents, and I believe I've been made the contact person to then disperse to the departments for the actual records.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor... Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Boarding commission appointments, you have Mr. Gary Whitlow, who has applied to be part of the Urban Environmental Commission. We had several places on the Urban Environmental that were vacant, and also, I think, I'm expecting an application from Mr. Rommel Murray that's going to bring his application in as well. You also have board reappointments for future meetings for the Board of Electrical Examiners, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Historical Zoning Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there a motion? I think Mr. Whitlow is going to be here. Is he here?
Yes.
There's Mr. Whitlow. Thank you for your application.
Thank you for my consideration.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I got it.
All right. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you helping out. All right, you have a couple of beer permits. One beer permit, I should say.
This is for a special event, two actual special events for the Chamber of Commerce. One event is on July the 7th, and the other is September 12th.
You want it?
And the application was in order, and we recommend approval, and we'll issue a permit if you so approve.
So move. Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any other business from the staff or the City Council?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.